This is the Orlando Sentinel editorial meeting with the three candidates who are running for Orlando City Council in District 3. The candidates are Robert Stewart, who is an incumbent, Samuel Chambers, who is a challenger, and Nicolette Springer, who is another challenger. And we want to thank you all for joining us. I appreciate your time. I wondered if each of you could take a minute and tell us a little bit about yourselves, and then we will go into some questions. So, Mr. Chambers, why don't we start with you?
Yeah, so my name is Samuel Chambers. I've been born and raised here in Orlando, Florida, not even just Orlando, Florida, but in here in District 3. A little bit about me personally, like I said, I grew up here. I became an Eagle Scout at the United Methodist Church, right next to the Publix on Edgewater. I went to St. Charles, Edgewater High School, where I graduated seventh in my class. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in political science. After graduating, I worked with State Representative Eskamani here in Orlando. And now I am running because I am concerned about housing being unaffordable. I'm concerned about pedestrian cyclist safety. I'm concerned about renewable energy, homelessness, and trying to address those through numerous means.
Okay. Thanks very much. Ms. Springer, how about you?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Nicolette Springer, and I am running to be the next Orlando City Commissioner for District 3. I'm an advocate and mother of two, a policy expert with a master's degree in criminal criminology from UCF, and I'm currently working on my PhD in public policy. My husband and I have lived in the district for, or lived in the central Florida for more than 17 years, and we're growing our family here. And I've built my career on identifying problems in government institutions, tackling solutions with different stakeholders, and fighting for everyday people. And I will bring that skill set to Orlando. Throughout my campaign, I have talked to thousands of neighbors in the District 3 area, and the message has been clear: Orlando wants and is ready for next chapter. District Theory needs a leader who is change maker with a record of working across jurisdictions, who will act boldly and who will bring rich diversity, the rich diversity of Orlando to the table where decisions are made. I am that leader, but don't take my word for it. I'm proud to be endorsed by elected officials from every level in government and from labor union leaders and organizations to have successfully challenged the status quo. Representing the people of District 3 will be my number one priority because it is what Orlando needs for the future they deserve.
Okay, Mr. Stewart?
I have been in office now, elected four times, looking to seek my fifth. And part of the reason for that is that while some of our people have declared that they have been born and raised in Orlando, I actually am born and raised in District 3 and have been around for just a few years. My goal in life was just to basically serve and serve both through the work of the Christian Service Center and both of the work of the city. Part of the reason why I'm running is that we've taken some major projects that are on the cusp of being started, and it's taken us 10 or 12 years to get there. Major projects like Edgewater Drive or Virginia Corrine, those are projects that take a long, long time, and I'd like to stay on board and get those projects completed. As I mentioned, I'm born and raised here, my kids are born and raised here, and my grandchildren so far are born and raised here, and excited about that. But I'm also excited about the endorsements that we've received, not only from, you know, Mayor Dyer and Commissioner Ortiz, a guy I was sitting next to, which is great, and even Sheriff Mina, also the OPD and OFD unions, as well as Realtors and COBA. So we have a lot of support for me, and that's really kind of cross-partisan support. And I'm looking forward to continuing to serve and sharing some of the ideas that I've got. So, thank you very much, Mike.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate you all being so succinct. I wonder, one of the questions I oftentimes lead these with is just asking the candidates if they could identify policy differences between each other, not necessarily as criticisms, but just as, you know, voters are looking for what the differences are in candidates. And so, we'd like to know what your policy differences are. So, Mr. Stewart, if you could start, and we'll just go in reverse order.
Well, I guess take a minute or so. I can't tell you exactly what the policy differences are because with challengers who don't have an understanding of where we are in policy, trying to identify those. I can tell you that oftentimes, many of the ideas that have been expressed by both of my opponents are things we're already doing. A good example is in Neighborhood Watch and communicating back with our neighbors about crime and criminal activity. We communicate each day with more than 100, 150 people in our district about what's going on. So we're doing that regularly, as well as attending hundreds of those things. The police neighborhood patrol unit, we have brought back into force about a year ago. We're expanding again this year so we can put more comps in the neighborhoods so they can understand the community and make sure that we're doing a good job. Those are two policy issues that we're doing, that my opponents have advocated that we go ahead and do that. And then the infrastructure is the biggest concern, and then, of course, expanding green space. So those are things the city is doing or in process. I am impatient because it just takes longer to accomplish those tasks. So I'm going to stay on task and stay on top of those.
Okay. Ms. Springer, how about you? What are some differences in some policies or ideas?
Sure. So, thank you for the question, Mike. You know, I built my career in public policy. I started working in jurisdictions and in municipalities across the state doing program evaluation and policy analysis. And I know what works because I've been part of that process to not only evaluate outcomes, but to make sure that they're implemented well. And I've done that throughout the state and here in Orange County. And I bring now skill sets to the city. Some issues that I see that we have at hand is, you know, we're talking about public safety, and Neighborhood Watch programs are great, but they don't solve the problem. And, you know, we've had this tragic experience the last couple of days with a young woman out in UCF, and I understand that that wasn't in the city of Orlando, but that can happen to any woman. And it's one of our greatest fears, you know, we don't get to walk around freely in the city, or any city really, without concern, and then to be so concerned that we can't even be safe in our own homes. I think cities are in a place that we need to strategize and modernize our codes and how we're policing in the city. And Neighborhood Watches would have never stopped that crime, but what could have stopped, what we could do now that we know what has happened, we could make better decisions going forward. We can pass a code or ordinance that requires apartment complexes, that if they're going to have master keys, that those master keys stay with the highest level official that's on the grounds, whether that be the manager of the property. And then anyone who enters an apartment complex needs to do that supervised. It needs to be two to three people from the apartment complex that enter a space. Those are modern solutions. Those are strategic. That's how we keep people safe. The city of Orlando has had a decrease in crime of about 22% over the last year, but we've had 17% rise in violent crime. That's our greatest fear. And what happened over to that young woman is tragic. It could be, it could have been prevented, but now that we know better, we need to do better. Those are the type of modern policy strategies that we need to be bringing, and that I'll bring to the city of Orlando.
Okay, Mr. Chambers, how about you? Some differences between you and your opponents?
So personally, I like to keep policy upfront about everything. If you go to my website, chambersforotown.com, you can see a list of my priorities. Some of the things I'm looking at that I don't necessarily hear from my opponents are making sure we have, we house the homeless, having actual housing means have been shown to not be more effective, but save money in the long run. Having independent investigations into misconduct of our police force, expanding the, what our citizens oversight review board can do when it comes to police investigations and misconduct, trying to curb urban sprawl, investing in renewable energy. Orlando is powered 90% by coal, so investing in renewables, microgeneration. I believe in having a jobs guarantee program where if you can't find a job on the private market, you come to city, we'll give you a good paying job. Beautifying our green spaces, investing in our infrastructure, making our city more renewable-friendly, making sure we have better mental health and addiction services for those who need those, making sure our LGBTQ plus community has equal access to health and reproductive products, greater gender inclusive spaces. So I can keep going on and on, but those are just some of the things that I'm up and open about that I don't necessarily hear in the conversation in this election.
If I could just quickly follow up, you mentioned a guaranteed job for anybody who wants one with the city of Orlando. How would that work? I mean, what if, what if you had 20,000 people wanting a job?
So, the, basically the way I see it is that in our current system, when we have unemployment, it's basically a sign that the market isn't capable of allocating our resources efficiently. It's basic economics that if you don't use all your resources, effectively in this case labor, that, you know, you have underproductions of goods and services. So obviously, people are going to want whatever private sector job, that's, you know, however they make from in that salary, whether that be, you know, $35,000 or whatnot. But here, what I'm saying, that if you can't find a job on the private market that will give you the, a job where, like I mentioned, beautifying our green spaces, making sure we can make our infrastructure up to date, investing in renewables, things of that sort. So it's more of a safety net rather than saying, hey, we're just going to hire everyone in the city.
Okay.
And I also would like, in that program, to reach out to private businesses or organizations that are in need of labor and working with them to get them, those employees.
Okay. I wanted to ask each of you if you could just identify one thing, one thing, that you think is like the key issue facing the city right now, the thing that demands the city's attention first and foremost. Ms. Springer, could you go first with that, please?
If we're speaking globally about the city in general, and not just specifically District 3, my answer would be that we focus on economic recovery from COVID. We need to make sure that we're providing solutions and resources to our small businesses. We also need to make sure that we're uplifting our arts community. They are, the backbone of this community falls onto the lapses of our arts community because they also provide many of our service workers. If someone goes to the theater, they go to a concert, they're also going to a restaurant and to a bar. And those are the backbones of the workers in our community. We need to make sure that they have safeguards in place, that we're putting resources behind them, but we're also providing them with solutions that they can use to help boost themselves up out of this economic downfall.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chambers, how about you? What's the, what's the biggest thing facing Orlando?
So after, or during this pandemic, we've seen a K-shaped recovery where the wealthy and the corporations have done better, while working class citizens and small businesses have been impacted the most. So ensuring that we make housing more affordable, making sure we keep driving to protect the right to unionize or collectively bargain, work to promote higher wages. We talk about that now in the city. We have a, for public workers, we have a $15 minimum wage. I think that's a great first step, but as I try to mention, a lot of the time that the fight for 15 started over a decade ago. We've had inflation since then. The cost of living has increased since then, that if you look, the cost of the living wage in Orlando would probably be closer to $17 an hour. And I believe to afford an actual place to live, on average, you would have to make about $22 an hour. So I think, again, 15's a good place to start. Other things, helping small businesses, making sure when we do development, making sure that the development provides workers for the businesses around the area, and making sure that, you know, Orlando has a high percentage of workers that are service sector employees that are often underpaid. So working on the city level and also lobbying the state to make sure that, you know, these workers who are the backbone of our economy essentially get paid a fair wage and have decent benefits.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart, how about you?
Well, Mike, I think we're on the right track with recovery. The challenge that we have, COVID has placed on us, is a significant challenge in terms of response. But I think that the response is as broad, is broad scope. I mean, it's a response that in terms of how do we impact infrastructure coming out of a COVID, and we've got some plans to do that. How do you impact the end of small business? We've got some plans and have accomplished a great deal of that already, especially working with our Main Streets. In District 3 alone, we've invested nearly half a million dollars into our Main Streets that directly go back and supporting small business and marketing in the small areas. And then we've done a great deal in terms of COVID response. It's now a chance to come out of a COVID and to bring our community back to where it needs to be. I think that you want somebody who's got some experience doing that. I did it along with the mayor with our Great Recession Recovery. I think we came out of that better than how we went into it. And so now I think we need to continue to use those same principles to move forward. But it's, the economic recovery is cross-disciplined, and so we can talk about some of the specifics later on, but I think it really is something that we all need to be focusing on.
I have one that's actually, I guess primarily for the challengers, and that is that, as Mike often says, elections are a matter of choices between candidates. Do challengers, do you look at any vote that has taken place, say, in the past few years, and say, if I had been there, I would have voted differently than, than either the incumbent Commissioner Stewart or whatever the commission, excuse me, the council voted in general? Mr. Chambers, is there anything particular you say, you can think of that you would have voted in a different way?
I'm not going to speak on anything specifically, but just in general, we've had a set of decisions that have been made where currently we're one of the most unaffordable places to live. We have the highest pedestrian cyclist fatalities. Our energy 90% comes from coal. There's about 3,000 homeless people on the streets every night. That doesn't just happen over the course of a year from COVID-19 pandemic. That comes from years and years, decades even, of mismanagement at the city level. So that's why I'm, I'm in this race.
Okay. Ms. Springer, is there any specific vote you can point to and say, I would have voted differently?
Yes. Here in District 3 in College Park, we have an apartment complex that was very hotly debated in the, prior to the last election. I would have voted differently than Mike, than the incumbent.
And just so our viewers who might not know, how, can you give the background on that briefly?
Sure. So there's an apartment, there's a, an apartment complex here in the College Park area of District 3 that was very hotly contested, and the neighbors did not want to see that development come in here. It was a very contentious point of argument during the last election for this seat. And at the, and the commissioner, the current commissioner, voted in support of that favor despite the fact that the neighborhood did not want building.
Okay. All right. And just by point of counterbalance, Commissioner Stewart, do you want to respond to that?
Well, I'd like to. I mean, going back four years is an interesting concept because I actually happened to live through it. That particular project had actually somewhere between 350 and 360 apartments that were assigned to it. We worked hard to move that down to about 201. We did a great deal to work with the community. And that particular piece of property was defined through what we call our Edgewater Drive Vision Task Force, where 200 people came together and said, if you're going to develop something, develop here and create buffers. So what we found out is that the community was against it, and now the community has essentially embraced it because of the continuation of the work in downtown. It's full, people are there, shops, people are walking around College Park, which is what we thought was going to happen originally. So I think it's, we've proven that over time, it's been a better decision. The same way people complained about the Wellesley, and now all of a sudden, it's become a mainstay of the downtown College Park area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, so maybe on that theme, Mr. Stewart, I wanted to ask you. You recently voted against a redevelopment in the Rosemont area, which has some degree of affordable housing in it. Can you talk about why you voted the way you did on that? And I'll ask the other two candidates, the challengers, how they would have voted and why.
Well, essentially, there's several reasons why. The first is that it is just too dense. When you bring in roughly 6,000 apartments on 128 acres, you're building essentially nine, y'all are familiar with the Yard project that's down in the area, and it was built in the industrial section that had some codes, had some rights to do that. You take and build nine of those onto a golf course in Rosemont, what you have created is a whole different level of, of, of a community. I listened to the community, the community said it's a bad idea. I came back with a compromise to allow the developer to begin this process. He didn't want that. He went and lobbied the other commissioners and did, and got their votes. I don't think it's a good project because I think in whole, in whole, it's just too dense for an area that doesn't have any other type of support businesses around it. He's trying to bring businesses to the community on the promise that they're going to have a certain number of people in the area, and his numbers bring those people in. In my case, numbers just don't work. And so I argued that originally, it got delayed. I argued it a second time, and the second time he got the support of other commissioners and, and voted over my objection, so.
Okay. Mr. Chambers, if you're familiar with the project, could you, could you talk about how you would have voted and why?
Sure. So if I was on the commission, I would have voted against the plan, I believe, as many of the people do in Rosemont, that they say clearly, we want to protect our green space. I'm for, you know, protecting green space. I'm on their side. And my main issue with it is that Rosemont, to a certain extent, is a poor or working class community, and the development which was being brought in, not only was there the height issue and the density issue, but also that the only 10% of the units are going to be affordable. Most of it was luxury apartments, super prime condos. I saw this as being a textbook gentrification effort, and so I had concerns in that aspect, as well as when it came to protecting the natural beauty of Rosemont, I had concerns of that as well. And also, listening to people, their main concerns of the height, height of the building, I just generally disagreed with the plan, not even the first plan, but the second plan as well. I still didn't think there was enough concessions the second time around.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Springer, what are your thoughts on that project?
I would have also voted no on the project, but I would have handled it a little bit differently with my colleagues. I would have asked the mayor and my colleagues on the commission to please come down to Rosemont with me, to visit the property, to meet with the neighbors, to hear what we're hearing on the ground when we talk to the residents, and to physically see the space and fully understand what it means to bring that development in there. I think when you put something into perspective and it's tangible and you're on the ground and you're talking to people who will live there, who affects their everyday life, it gives you a different perspective on how you vote. We cannot operate in a silo. And when I have the opportunity to vote on behalf of District 3 in Orlando, what I'll be doing is every vote will be data-driven, it will be thought through, and if possible, I'll go down and understand what the residents are dealing with and see that with my own eyes, and talk to them about their community and why they think it's a good idea or a bad idea. We can't say blanket no to development. That's just not good policy. It's also not good for our economic growth here in Orlando. We're going to have to bring in some development, but we have to make sure that every development that we bring in has a percentage that's reserved for affordable housing, but it also fits the needs of that community. The development that's proposed to go out in RoseArts, in my view, does not fit the community's needs. And it's not just because of the lack of affordable housing or the small percentage of affordable housing that's going to be in that, those units. It's because it's just not fit with that community there. It's a working class community, and the type of apartments and businesses that they're bringing in there, it is not a fit to the residents who are currently in Rosemont. And if we would have brought the entire commission down with the mayor to meet the residents and to see what the community would have looked like with this type of building in it, I think that would have given everyone a much better perspective on their vote. And that's how I would have advocated for my community.
Well, so all of you say you would have voted against that project, and it did have some affordable housing in it, I mean, maybe not a great deal, but some. So what are your ideas for, I mean, our editorial board views affordable housing as one of the biggest, maybe the biggest problem facing this region. So what are your ideas for promoting more affordable housing in Orlando? Ms. Springer, what, what would you do?
We need to require builders to have a certain percentage of development with attainable housing and affordable housing options. Needs to be affordable housing options in a percentage that has some teeth from the city. Meaning, if we say that we're going to, you're going to have 10%, we need to hold your feet to the fire on that. We cannot currently do that because we don't have an ordinance that allows us to do it. We need to update our codes, we need to update our ordinances so that we can hold developers accountable. There's a passage of time when the developer will come in and they'll say, yes, we're going to do all these things, and they, they build the, the development, but then they oftentimes will sell it off. Without an ordinance that allows us to hold every owner of that development accountable over the course of time, we lose power as a city to advocate for our residents and for the affordable housing needs that we have. The other part of the affordable housing piece, and, you know, the commissioner alluded to this earlier, is it's multi-system. You know, we have to have a global view of what affordable housing looks like. People can't afford housing because they're not getting paid enough. And this week, in the state of Florida, we bumped up to $10 an hour. It's slowly going to creep up to 15. Every city employee is making $15 an hour. But what we're not doing as a city is making sure that when we talk to vendors, when vendors are coming in and trying to do business here in the district or in the city of Orlando, we're not holding them accountable. When we look at the workers who are working at the Orlando Airport that's on city property, at MCO, those workers, many of them are not making minimum wage. They're, they're, they're doing work there that is essential to our economy. We are a tourist-driven economy. They are the forward-facing people who meet everyone who comes into the city of Orlando at the airport, and they are working three or four jobs to make ends meet. We have to hold people accountable at all levels. So when we're talking about affordable housing, we make sure that there's a percentage that we can hold them to. And when we're talking about our working class people who we have to make sure can get a livable wage, we have to hold employers accountable who are doing business with the city or on city property.
Well, did you, just two quick follow-ups. Did you say workers at, some workers at the airport are not making minimum wage? How's that legal?
That's correct. So there's some, there's employees at the airport, if you've ever gone to the airport, and if you've had an elderly person with you or someone who's disabled and they're pushing a wheelchair, those wheelchair pushers do not make minimum wage. They are considered tipped employees, so they make the same wage as a server at a restaurant. And that's, they're not the only, that's just one example. There's also examples of other service and food workers at the Orlando Airport who are also not making those wages. They're, they're considered forward-facing tipped employees, so they're exempt from minimum wage.
Okay. So they make the minimum wage required for tipped employees?
Correct, but that's still not a livable wage. It's about $8 an hour, and these are people, once again, who are the front-facing people who meet our tourists coming in, and they're not able to live in Orlando or in our house, in any of the housing units because they don't, they make $8 an hour. Even if they were making, even if they were making $15 an hour, that's still only $30,000 a year. They still can't afford to live in the city of Orlando.
Okay. The other question, just very quickly, you said a certain percentage of housing should be required to be affordable housing with new developments. What percentage should we have in mind?
I think we need to look at what best practices are happening across the country in cities that are about our size, and we need to make sure that we're coordinating with our experts on the ground here in Orlando, but also nationally and statewide. And that percentage can vary, but we need to make sure that we lock that in and we do best practices of what we know works in cities our size. I don't think right now it would be well thought out of me to give you that percentage without talking to the experts on the ground and making sure that we align with national standards.
Okay. Mr. Stewart, what about affordable housing? You've been on the council for some time now. What have you all done about that?
Well, Mike, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that gets said that we have to kind of make sure we're on the same page on. So let me start with this. GOA and OUC are not controlled by the city of Orlando, they're independent. While I agree completely with Ms. Springer, I have fought to do that. The one thing that connects them all is the mayor of Orlando sits on all those goals, and so we have a chance to lobby the mayor directly. I think Ms. Springer is exactly correct. We need to do something different out there in terms of livable wage. But when it comes to housing, one of the challenges that we have in our city is that we're having the same issue that's happening across the Sun Belt and across the entire country. Every time you pick up another national newspaper, you see that affordable housing is the biggest challenge. People want to come to Orlando. We have to figure out how to make this work. So Orlando's done some really neat things with partnerships. We've done some things with requirements. I think y'all may have heard some of these figures, so I'll just share them with you. When a builder goes to borrow money today to build a condominium complex, he has to put up 20% private capital versus 80% borrowing money to do that. When a, when the same builder goes and converts that or decides that's an apartment complex, he can borrow 105% of that value. So builders build apartments, they don't build condos. And what we have to do is figure out how to get to where our, the funding source is, is helping us accomplish that. Years ago, when all this was happening, builders couldn't do that, so they had to Years ago, when all this was happening, builders couldn't do that, so they had to come to the city, look for taking money from the Sodowsky Act, look for taking money from the city, and we could leverage that to increase housing, based from ordinance as well as from PD. But the city has also done partnerships with Lift Orlando, partnerships with Elevate, partnerships with groups across, to make sure that we have affordable housing as part of that, providing land to accomplish that task. We, the city has done a great deal. But in a sense, for the people that are coming to Orlando, it's kind of a dent in the works, and we have to continue to stay on task to make this happen. 10% is a good goal, but it's not the goal that should happen at every occasion. We should continue to work on others. There's an apartment complex that came to downtown Orlando that was going to be 40 or 45% affordable housing. We were excited about it, moving into kind of these really neat little studio apartments, it was going to be a great idea. They had the land, we had everything all lined up, and the builder backed out, because he couldn't figure out how to build it. So that kind of stuff is going on all the time. So oftentimes, what gets approved isn't actually what gets built, and so we have to continue to stay on top to make sure that what gets approved gets built, and we make sure that they're accountable for, which I think we do a pretty good job on.
Okay. Mr. Chambers, you've mentioned affordable housing several times, what's, what are your ideas for how to make that a reality?
Well, I think that having a set percentage of what affordable or attainable housing is in a given area, that's a, that's an excellent way to start. And I think part of that, you know, before we get an ordinance that, you know, sets that limit, that we, as city commissioners, we get direct oversight over development and building. So we can say on an ad hoc basis, for example, in the Rose Arts community, that if you're wanting to build in a working-class community, that the type of housing you're putting in that area should be for a working-class community, not for luxury apartments or super prime condos. So I think there's an element where we have to beware of the socioeconomic dynamics of certain parts of our city, but I think also, a large part has to play with our supply of housing, and so we need to do a better job of, in our urban downtown area, not in suburbia like in Rosemont, but having high-density infill projects to offset our deficit in our housing stock. And that's mostly the way I see it. I also am interested in tackling homelessness or housing means, which I'm sure that will have an impact on affordable housing as well, expanding rental assistance, that as well.
Okay. Silverland Sentinel did a, an investigation a few years back that looked at the use of force by the police department in the city, and found that it was more frequent than in similar cities, similar characteristics. And then there was a report that was recently released that had quite a number of recommendations for the police department, some of which dealt with use of force. So I guess I'd like to ask you all, if you think that there, there's a problem in Orlando with the police using force too often and too aggressively, and what should be done about that? Mr. Stewart, what do you think?
Well, I mean, use of force is an interesting thing. I think we have to figure out kind of what's happening. When, when you look at the report that came out, we found out two things that were important. The first is that, that they were supportive of where Orlando is and where it's going. Your own investigation led us, in the last two or three years, to cut back significantly amount of use of force. The Bowman report came out and said that not only do you have some challenges that you have to address, which is, you know, an open opportunity to have an open book, that, you know, the fact the report y'all have probably read is actually online. It also came back and said we need a greater accountability. So two things happened, is that we, we don't have the data to determine whether we're really doing a good job in terms of some areas that are at risk. That was one of the data-driven things that Bowman wants us to do, which I think is a good point. And the second point is to put more power in the Oversight Committee, Oversight Task Force, that will look over police. In the past, we've not had that oversight, we have, we have strengthened it even already this year, and we intend on strengthening that some more. So we have a Citizens Review Panel that will actually have some teeth in the moving forward. Part of the partnership we have to deal with is with the Orlando Police Department, I have the honor of having their, their endorsement. But I think the key really is, you have to get them to really buy into the fact that they say they want to get rid of bad apples, and we have to hold their, their feet to the fire about getting rid of bad cops and helping us do that. In the past, the union has, on occasion, defended some people that we all know probably should not be on the police force. On the other side, our leadership has taken the lead to get them off the police force and continue to move them, let them find their career someplace else, as my father used to say. So those are, I think, some key things that y'all have helped out, and the Bowman report's going to give us a blueprint to move forward in the future.
Great. Mr. Chambers, do you think the Orlando Police Department has a problem with using force?
Yes, and I think that it's a problem across the country, and I think when we do it, we always want to look towards limiting the use of force. We always want that to be force or government sanctioned violence as the last bastion of protecting our community. And so part of it, I believe, is that we need more demilitarization, in terms of we don't need military-grade weaponry or armor, because when you have it, you're more likely to end up using it. I also believe that we need independent investigations into misconduct, often when use of force is utilized, and so that will be an extra step of accountability. Also, that would, I would like to see those instances go immediately to the Citizens Review Board for oversight, adjudication of what would, should happen next to not only that specific officer, but how to reform the police department in the whole. I also believe in more community-based policing, where, you know, when we have someone, we have an interaction that's, that's non-violent, we don't necessarily need to be sending out armed officers to address that situation, so making sure we have, where, you know, we could have community officers or unarmed personnel train in specific situations when it comes to domestic abuse, addiction of different substances, mental health, things of that sort, to make sure that people feel safe when they're interacting with the police, and that they are safe, because we are limiting the use of force, which could, and often does lead to some injury and even death. So those are some of the things that I would look at, at doing, and trying to work with the state to try to renegotiate policing contracts, union contracts, which play a big role in our ability to regulate our police department.
Okay. Ms. Springer?
Thank you. I do believe that there is a problem with police using use of force with our citizens. And I think that what we need to do is we need to reevaluate where we're going with policing. And one of the things that was said was that we need to get buy-in from OPD to put in these policies. We don't need to get buy-in from OPD. The mayor and the commission are the oversight for OPD. The chief is hired by the mayor, and the commission approves that hire. And so this is unlike in Orange County, where we have an elected sheriff, and OPD is not an elected position, it's a position that we have oversight over. We need to be requiring more of them. I think it's great that we've increased the use of body cameras, I think that helps with accountability, we need to continue on that. I think it's wonderful that we have this community response team that you guys have reported on, and that we've seen great success, that started at the beginning of the year. For those who don't know, the community response team, it partners a law enforcement officer with a mental health or social worker, and it allows there to be the ability to de-escalate with a mental health provider. Because what's happening with most of these calls is they're not violent calls, we don't really need both police to show up on some of these calls. And so if we're able to de-escalate and get services to community members through a social worker or a mental health provider, we need to be putting more money into that. And the city just expanded that program, I would fully support that being expanded more, I would love to see that in schools, I think that's a place where we can expand that. The other thing that I would like to mention is that we need to have accountability for the officers who are bad actors. I, I do believe that there are many officers who are here doing the right thing, and wanting to protect our community, and wanting to serve. But their, their successes are being tarnished by bad actors, and we need to hold them accountable. We need to have a system that if a person has, if an officer has a charge of, of force, that person can no longer be a police officer, end of story. And we need to be able to keep that data, so that we know that they're not then going to serve in Orange County. We need to make sure that we're sharing that, we need a universal recording system to make sure that we get those people out of the system. This would be absolutely an absurd conversation if we applied this to any other occupation. We wouldn't allow this kind of incompetence in teaching, we wouldn't allow it if you were a pilot, we wouldn't allow it in any other setting, but for some reason, we keep giving chance upon chance upon chance to people who are harming our community. They are not the majority of police officers, we need to get those bad actors out, and in order to do that, we need buy-in from our mayor and from our commissioners, who will hold their employee, the chief of police, accountable, to say that he will hold, he or she will hold their officers accountable. We need more policies that will make sure that when that review comes in, and we know that this person has a habitual, has, has a habit of force, they can no longer be a police officer, end of story. It's not even negotiable for us. And then we also need to keep up with the body cameras, so that we know that we can keep people accountable. There's two sides to every story, the camera helps us get both sides. We need to make sure that we continue supporting those.
Thank you. We're running short on time, I wondered if each of you could, pretty briefly, tell us what you're thinking about what should be done about some of the problems that are happening downtown after hours, with, you know, clubs letting out everybody at once, and, you know, some issues coming up, including violence, including violence against police officers. What, what ought to be done about that? Mr. Chambers?
I think, to a certain extent, we need to hold the bars and clubs accountable for, you know, they're the ones who provide the substances which intoxicate our individuals. So I think we need to hold them accountable, perhaps having, you know, an ordinance or some program or policy where a bar or club is held personally responsible if they let a person who is legally intoxicated out on the streets with, you know, their keys to their car or vehicle. I think that's one aspect of it. I think also, generally, at that time, making sure we have a higher police presence, doesn't necessarily need to be armed officers, but I think a good presence would deter people from acting out. And I think some of these instances, we had the, a unfortunate incidence where there, someone was, I believe, killed a couple months ago. And I believe, a lot of times, we have a knee-jerk reaction to those, I think that instance was isolated, but I do see that there is a need to hold these businesses accountable for letting people that they intoxicate out onto the streets.
Ms. Springer, what, what do you think about the, the problems of downtown after-hours?
Our downtown businesses that are providing after-hours, nightclubs or bars, or, you know, those types of entertainment, they're necessary to our economy, and I think that it's not something that we all frequent on a regular basis. I'm home with two kids pretty early, so I'm not frequenting those, but I know a lot of our Orlando citizens are enjoying those establishments. We need to make sure that they're being good neighbors, and I think there's an easy way to do that, and that's just basic communication. I know that there's been some instances over in District Three, I know it's not exactly downtown, but I want to make this a District Three specific. Example is that we've had some issues with the M Lounge and with Savoy over on Island Home Village, and the code enforcement has been called, the neighbors have made some complaints, and to their credit, those two establishments have done the right thing. They have gone out and they've changed their policies, they've changed their speakers, because they're saying it's too loud, they've done incredible amounts of renovation, particularly Savoy has done a great job. I went out and visited with Brandon, the owner out there, and I, I saw what he's done in the, in the back porch of that, that facility, and he's really put in a lot of time, he's being a good neighbor, he's being a strong small business, and we need to lift them up. The clubs, the restaurants, the bars, they took the biggest hit for us in COVID, and quite honestly, they were on that essential workers group. They fed us, they made sure that we were content, they did our best for comfort food and some drinks, we had the drinks on the go, that we can pick up those cocktails. We need to make sure that we do our best to keep them running. Most of them were eligible to get some PPE loads, they can keep their employees in place, and that's great. Those employees who work there are, are Orlandoans who are trying their best to make a living. Some of them are college students, some of them are parents, but they're all working hard, and I think that what we need to do is just ask them and have a conversation. Code enforcement is great, we need it, and it definitely plays a role when we have people who don't want to consistently follow the rules. But I also think that there's a place for us to have a line of communication, and just make sure that our neighbors are doing what they need to do for businesses, and being good neighbors with them. And as a leader, as a commissioner, it's my job to bridge those relationships, and I did just that when I went down to visit Savoy and the M Lounge, is I spoke to them, I connected them to the neighbors who were having the issues, and I said, have a conversation, come out and have a beer at Savoy, and look at all the work they've done, they're trying really hard to be a good neighbor, and they haven't had a noise complaint since they've made those, since they've made those renovations. And I think the same could be done in the downtown area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, we, there, there's a couple hours worth of conversation here, Mike, so let me kind of cover a couple things. Yeah. The first is, Orlando has really two downtowns, and we have to figure out how we're going to address both of those downtowns. The first downtown is those who are there during the course of the day, and they tend to clear out about 6:30 or 7 o'clock at night, and then about 9 o'clock comes another downtown Orlando. We've worked hard to try to work with the bars, to give more accountability, to require more police presence, and more off-duty officers. We've worked hard, had a lot of, of friction from them, but we've continued to work down that path, and I think we're making a little bit of progress. But, but there is no progress when a guy wants to take a video of him picking up a brick and going after a cop. So we got to figure out how we can address those kind of issues. The issues on the Savoy are a little bit more complicated, I think, than what we would like to be thought of, but the long and the short of it is that, what code enforcement does, is code enforcement's job is to bring you into code. So when you violate code enforcement, code of City of Orlando, unless it's a safety issue, the solution is to come into code. We have a way for them to, to address the speakers' issues over there, they have not filed for a permit for that yet, although there are people who are talking like they have. I've talked to the owners just, just this morning, and all you have to do is just have them file the permit, and we'll review it and start moving forward on it. So it just, it seems that in the political realm of a political season, things get heated and get heated very quickly. We have a process for it, and we've been working with them through that process just in the last couple of hours. So, so those are the kind of things, I think, we've got to, we've got to come up with a way in which the community understands the role that they play. But 16-year-old in downtown Orlando at 12 o'clock at night, doesn't need to be on the street, we got to figure out how to, to make it uncomfortable for them, so that we can have a good, strong downtown thriving business to support our venues that we have spent so much money on in downtown Orlando. Making progress, we've got more progress to make.
Okay, well, we're out of time, I want to thank all of you for participating, we, we appreciate it a lot, and I, I want to wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.